Okay, good morning. How's everybody doing today? Yeah. Okay, today is July 30th. This is the King County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundis.
We have all five members present today. We're ready to conduct business. Is Tyler Jones in the audience today? That line? Well then, would you all please rise for our invocation from Pastor Supervisor Robinson?
That's a stretch. Today we'll have an Irish blessing. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind always be at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. Amen.
Please follow me in the honor of our nation's flag. Ready? Salute. Very good.
Good job.
Okay, right now, we're going to go to unscathed appearances. Any person may directly address this board at this time on any item on the agenda, or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. And two minutes are allowed, but we really don't do that unless you get out of control, so. Do we have any card, any speaker cards today?
I do. The first speaker is Jonathan Brewster.
Morning, Mr. Brewster. How you doing today?
Well, sir, how are you?
Yes.
Chairman, Board, just want to give you guys an update on what the DSA has been doing the last couple of months. July 1st, we had our annual scholarship golf tournament. We had about 100 players at the country club. It turned out really good. We made a lot of money. We raised about $20,000 profit to give out scholarships. So we'll be handing out 22 scholarships tomorrow night at the Elks Lodge. I want to thank all the people that helped me put it on. It's gotten bigger and bigger over the years, so next year I'm going to try and make more money and hand out more scholarships. Everybody that put in. Fred Ferrier, everybody that put in got one? Yes, everyone that put in got a scholarship, so that's what we're trying to do. And then July 20th, we did a, we sponsored a day at the plunge. Because it was like 115. Yeah, hey, so we sponsored anybody under 18 years of age, we got them in for free. We had a decent turnout. If it gets hot again, we'll probably do it again one more time. And then last but not least, we sponsored a 13 through 16 baseball team that made it to the Western Region for Babe Ruth. We were one game away from the World Series. We lost that one. I was going to get ejected to fire the kids up, but I remember Joe Nevs was in the stands, so I didn't want to do that.
So you sacrificed Macias.
Myself.
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, Macias got kicked out. You stayed in the ass.
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, that's what we're up to.
And that's all from the golf tournament?
The 20 grand?
Yeah, and that's all for what you did with that money, put it back in the community? Well, thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
And good job, Coach. You know, your aggressive base running really made a difference, and I really appreciate the way you coached.
Could have had Santa Claus chase him around the bases.
It only happened once. And the statute of limitations already ran out, so it's good.
Uh, we have anybody else?
I have no other speaker cards. It doesn't appear anybody online has their hand raised, and I received no written correspondence.
Anybody in the audience like to say anything? We're good? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to go now to item three, approval of minutes report out of closed session from the regular meeting of from July 23rd, 2024.
There is nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Item B is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, July 23rd, 2024. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundis.
Item passes with four in favor, one abstention. Uh, move on now to consent counter. All items on a consent counter listed as one motion unless supervisors would like to pull one item out to discuss separately.
So move it, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs. Moved by second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Hey, thank you very much. The next item is regular, regular counter and item A, behavioral health, and we have Kristi Lupus, Lupkus or Dr. Lewis.
I only go what I read, so. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Uh, my name is Polo Ortiz. I am a program manager with Keats County Behavioral Health. The item I bring before your board today is an agreement to establish an official partnership with Kings County Behavioral Health, Public Guardian, and Generations Healthcare to support the placement of Keats County's most vulnerable patients, those individuals who are conserved by the court with severe mental illness, residents who are placed as LPS conservatorships who require 24-hour care and supervision. SCP programs, special treatment programs, provide mental health services for patients who are diagnosed with chronic psychiatric impairments and whose adaptive functioning is moderately impaired in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title 22. The program objective is to provide a program aimed at improving adequate functioning of patients to enable some patients to move into less restrictive environment and prevent other patients from regressing to a lower level of functioning. KCBH and Public Guardians Office began using Generations Healthcare in 2023 as a placement facility for Kings County conserve residents when medical needs became limited. Unfortunately, there are limitations to securing appropriate placements. Conservatees run the risk of requiring higher levels of care, including placements in emergency rooms or hospitals. Use of Generations Healthcare has been a case-by-case basis for complex patients through emergency single-case agreements authorized by director and legal counsel. Additionally, Generations Healthcare is a local provider with facilities in that water in Fresno. This agreement would alleviate the need for single-case agreements through a standing agreement spanning the array of services and facilities within the Generations Healthcare Network, thus reducing administrative burden to the county and increasing timely access to services for Kings County Conservatees. I would like to respectfully request approval from the board to establish a partnership with Healthcare Generations Healthcare to ensure Kings County residents continue to receive the support they need to meet their mental health needs. Thank you for your time and consideration to support this initiative.
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns or comments from the board? What's your desire? Moved by Supervisor Fagundis and second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, I have a favor. They got it. Good job. Okay, we'll move on now to child support services.
Uh, one, one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consider approving an agreement with Keats County Community Action Organizations to provide behavioral health. Bridge Housing Program Services effective July 30th through June 30th, 2027. Lisa.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Polo. Um, we have such a great management team, and it's nice for them to be able to come up and start representing some of the work that they work on so closely and directly. So thank you for having Polo today. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor is Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. I'm here this morning to request your approval for the agreement with Kings County Action Organization, KCAO, for the provision of behavioral health bridge housing, so we call this BHBH program services. Um, the BHBH program was signed into law in September 2022 under Assembly Bill 179, providing $1.5 billion in funding through June 30th, 2027, to address immediate housing and treatment needs for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness who have behavioral health conditions, including serious mental illness and substance use disorders. Additionally, the passage of Senate Bill 1338, which established the Care Court as Section 5982B to the Welfare and Institution Code to stipulate that care program participants be prioritized for any appropriate bridge housing funding by BH, by the BHBH programs. In 2023, Kings County Behavioral Health applied, applied for and was awarded the BHBH grant for the Department of Healthcare Services by the Department of Healthcare Services. On April 23rd, 2024, the board approved the agreement between KCBH and Advocates for Human Potential, the DHCS Third Party Grant Administrator, to receive the BHBH grant award. The subsequent agreement before you today is to pass through those funds to KCAO and establish requirements for the development and operation of the local BHBH program. This agreement will enable KCAO to develop and operate 27 bridge housing units at the Holiday Lodge in Hanford, a former human services agency project during room key locations during the COVID-19 pandemic. Bridge housing serves as a short-term transitional housing with the aim of transitioning vulnerable clients out of homelessness, providing a stable experience that can facilitate the placement into a more permanent housing situation. It is often considered the missing link between the shelter system and permanent housing. Um, in addition to housing, KCAO will provide onsite case management to assist residents in connecting to appropriate systems of care with the county and the community, helping them become document-ready and prepared for access to sustainable, affordable, and permanent housing sources. This is a valuable building block in the county's preparation for the state-required Care Court, and also a very important block in the continuum of care of housing. The sole source agreement with KCAO has been reviewed and approved by the purchasing manager and County Council. The agreement expands upon existing relationship with KCAO and ensures the necessary expenditure for the project to meet the one-year operational time work, timeframe, sorry, required by the BHBH funding. There's no impact to the general fund, and I respectfully request your board's approval for this agreement. I'm available for any questions along with Jeff Garner and his team from KCAO this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jeff Garner's in the back row. If we have any questions? Any comments or questions from the board? Direction?
So move it, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, next item. Item B, Child Support Services. Maria Wait. Morning, Maria.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Maria Wait, Kings County Child Support Services Director. We're present today to request that August 2024 be proclaimed as Child Support Awareness Month, known as CSAM. The State of California Department of Child Support Services selects the theme annually, and the 2020, 20, sorry, 2024 theme is Shelter Safety Solution Support, which focuses on child support services, providing all participants with needed resources and referrals to ensure their needs are met, along with establishing and enforcing support orders to ensure children can thrive. We have five representatives from the department to present this morning and showcase how we use our values to exemplify this year's CSAM theme. I would like to introduce Mary Conley, Assistant Director.
Good morning. Child Support Services is dedicated to our value of communication and honesty. Establish reliable, open discussions in the focus on openness and transparency. In all circumstances, in the 2223 federal fiscal year, Kings County Child Support Services served 17,032 participants, with 8,570 of those being children. We collected approximately $15 million in child support, and 92.7% of our cases had a child support order in place. Our 45 staff members have a combined 523 years of experience and service at Kings County. Twelve of those have 20-plus years of service. We have a committed team that is focused on seeing children thrive. Next up, we have Cassie Weider, Executive Secretary.
Good morning. Another value of Child Support Services is education. We exemplify this value by providing outreach and knowledge to current and future customers. In honor of CSAM this year, Child Support Services is hosting its first Kids' Day event this Thursday, August 1st, at Fast Plaza from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This outreach event is to celebrate CSAM by having a fun event for children, families, and residents in our community with an emphasis on providing back-to-school items for kids, along with information on services each participating organization has available to our wonderful community. Another value is relationships. Develop and maintain healthy and trustworthy partnerships. We are honored that Kings County's finest Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Victim Witness Office, Public Health Department, and Library are participating at this outreach event, along with several other agencies. During Kids' Day this Thursday, our office will be open until 7:00 PM for child support customers, excuse me, for child support services customers. There'll be free haircuts for 18 years of age and under, free food, and more. We invite all to attend this wonderful educational outreach event. Flyers for this event are available on your way out on the table next to today's board agendas. Up next, we have Dory McCarty, Program Manager.
Good morning. One of Child Support Services' values is nurturing. Work within program parameters, maintain integrity, display empathy, and remain accountable to the public. Our customers can submit customer service survey responses, which they rate a caseworker's timeliness, respectfulness, acknowledgement, answering their concerns, satisfaction, and next steps. It also allows them to submit a comment. We are highlighting two of our customer service survey responses that showcase our staff's commitment to being nurturing. First survey to share, a customer stated, honestly, I have never had an experience that restored my faith in humanity. Yes, I know I haven't made my payments, and for that I do have my reasons, but I will start to pay regularly now. With my case's sensitive situation, Rochelle handled it with such professionalism and empathy, it really made a world of difference in this matter. Second survey response, my case manager Kristen was very attentive and helpful in assisting me to solve my issue. I felt very cared for and did not feel as if my issue was still something I needed to worry about. I am glad to have spoken to her. Finally, we have Delia Lee, Child Support Supervisor.
Very good. That's a good story.
Morning.
Good morning.
Child Support Services values listening and dependability. Actively receiving information while embracing a wide variety of concepts and making a difference by helping families secure financial and medical support. We aim to listen and strive for dependability to making ourselves as available as possible to our current and future customers. Customers can always reach us at our local and direct numbers of 559-852-4127, or our local email address of support dot counts at co.kings.ca.us. In addition, we provide our customers with our direct contact information, so we are easily accessible to answer questions and available for customer contact. In highlighting CSAM, we will be open to the public on Saturday, August 3rd, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to see customers. Outreach cards are available with our contact information are available on your way out at the table next to the board agenda. Returning to the podium is our director. We respectfully request that your board adopt a proclamation declaring August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by County Council. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. And I have a proclamation right here. So would the board like to proclaim this month as a Child Support Month? Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Valley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
It passes. We'll go down in the well. We'll take a photo. And I wore my blue. Richard wore his blue, so.
I missed the memo.
Me too.
Dom will cut your head off. Mary, you're hiding. Mary. Mary, you're hiding. On purpose. They cheese. All right, good job. You were told to come here for some reason.
And Chairman, before we move on, if I can just advise you that regular item D from Public Works has been pulled, and it'll be brought back at a future agenda. I was just notified. But we can have item C still.
Okay, we'll move on now to item C, Public Health Department, and we have Heather. Heather, you changed your last name? On purpose?
Yes, I got married.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Heather Camples now.
Yes.
Did you, I didn't get invited. I give cool gifts to. And I'm a lot of fun.
I wanted to go to the courthouse with my husband and want to have a wedding, so we have a small little courthouse is much easier.
Yeah.
But, um, okay, thank you. Um, so good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Camples with Public Health. And this morning, Kings County Department of Public Health is seeking your board's authorization to approve a second amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with Aluna Health for contracted staff to provide epidemiology laboratory and informatic services to the Kings County Public Health Department through June of 2025. Your board approved the ELC grant back in September of 2020, and Aluna Health has served as a bona fide agent for the California Department of Public Health for the past 18 years, making it the primary recipient of the ELC funding. The California Department of Public Health contracted with Luna Health in 2020 to help local public health departments with staffing shortages during the COVID-19 pandemic. The purpose of this contract is to aid state and local governments in formulating data-driven policy decisions concerning testing, mitigation, and prevention efforts. Our department has been using Luna Health for our contracted epidemiologist position since September of 2020. And then our current contracted Epi actually just resigned in June to go work for Madera County permanently. Um, so we are in recruitment with the county to bring on a full-time epidemiologist. They're actually on the consent that you guys just approved for an advanced-up hire, so um, we're hoping to bring them on. Um, and this contract is kind of just put in place as a precautionary in case it's really hard to fill position. This, this candidate is coming from out of state. Um, and so if the recruitment falls through, or if they choose not to come ultimately, then um, we'll have this contracted like a backup to bring on another contracted Epi, because we have to have that in order to keep receiving this funding. Um, so this year extension is only, is gonna, if we have to fill it, will be about a $54,000 increase, which will include 835,000 over the last four or five years total, those 2020. Um, so there's no impact to the County General Fund associated with tracking the action. So this could be my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Heather. Any question, comment for Heather?
No problem.
Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Congratulations on your marriage, and congratulations on passing your, uh, item today. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and take item D off the agenda, and we're going to go right now to board member announcements and reports. Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, wrapped up the Kings County Blood Drive results. Uh, I was an overachiever once again in BMI and weight. I don't know why that, uh, doesn't surprise anybody, but, uh, uh, while I was there, and also it was featured in the newsletter about the, um, school physicals. Um, and so if you're a colleague at Kings County and you have dependent children, uh, you're able to get those school physicals, uh, for your athlete, whether it's fall, winter, or, or, uh, spring sports. And probably just go ahead and open that up, uh, even if they're, uh, banned FFA service clubs, anything, because I think preventative maintenance, um, medicine and, and nutrition education is something that was kind of short in my early lifetime, but I've overachieved it. Um, but I think if we can establish some good policies, uh, with some of those students early, uh, is the best policy. So if you get your students involved um, with, with a sport or with an activity and get that physical and get them, uh, in the preventative medicine mood. Uh, the board also met as the Housing Authority, took up a couple of items. We had to re-table, uh, had to table the audit. Uh, that'll be coming up next month. At the LAFCO meeting, the sphere of influence and annexation into the city of Hanford, uh, there were some against the efforts, uh, with long-range planning as one as LAFCO's duties of, um, organized growth and development. Um, also responded to the grand jury report and approved the attendance to the Cal LAFCO conference, uh, which once again is not being held in Armona. It's, uh, somewhere in, yeah. Yosemite. CART continues to deal with California Edison issues surrounding relocation of, uh, utility hardware and change orders dealing with underground infrastructure. Um, also reviewed the, uh, bus fleet audit, uh, from an independent inspector. No major, um, issues were found. Um, at the CART meet, I mean, at the Association of Governments meeting, uh, we had a public hearing on the Federal Transportation Improvement Program, air quality analysis, um, and received comments uh, to move forward. The fiscal and compliance audits were also reviewed and approved, and then the, uh, discussed the area-wide planning review, uh, that is somewhat new, even though we've been doing it for years. Uh, we're getting a lot more, um, uh, requests to review some of that funding responsibilities, especially from the feds. Uh, and we had three more this month. In, in years past, we've only had three or five a year. Seems like now we have 18, 20. But, uh, continue to move forward, uh, with the Association of Governments. On Sunday, attended the Cabrillo Scholarship Luncheon, um, and where all the recipients received their, uh, um, support for their academic careers. 95 scholarships were awarded statewide, 13 out of the Kings County Club, and want to congratulate all of those students as they continue their academic, um, careers. Uh, the 13 to 16-year-old Pacific Southwest Regional Tournament was in Tulare. Um, I think Hanford did a better job, uh, but that pitcher from Torrance was just, I'd check his birth certificate. That kid looks like he could start for the Dodgers. Yeah. Um, certainly want to congratulate the, all of the team members who played extremely well, and the coaching staff, um, just amazing job. So, and, and the parents, um, some of them not so much, but there was uh, the parents as well. Um, and then, uh, just to wrap up, and I think I've done this before, but the Kings County Blood Drive netted 27 points. Uh, the next blood drive will be September 5th. And so certainly want to thank the Kings County Health Department for their continuing efforts to keep that uh, project going, and it's very much appreciated. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. My goodness.
Uh, what's going on last week? So all I had was the meeting last night here in Chambers, and that was all.
Thank you. Supervisor Valley.
Uh, same thing as well, sir, and I'm sure you're talking about, uh, last night's meeting. I did.
55, 55?
54.
54?
54, so I'm bringing down the average age up here. When I got elected, I was, I was 38 when I got here, and now I'm 54, so.
How does it feel?
Uh, I'll let you know when the, uh, I'll let you know when the bourbon.
Oh, look good.
I'll let you know when the bourbon wears, uh.
Okay. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes, sir. Uh, let's see, last Wednesday, I attended the RCRC meeting, uh, which is the Rural Counties Representative in Sacramento. Uh, we had breakfast with Maria Gallegos Herrera. She's the State Director for the California U.S. Department of Ag, the Rural Development Division. And, uh, we voted on several propositions to give recommendations to the legislature, one of which is Prop 36 to increase penalties for retail theft. So we supported that. Uh, we voted against Prop 5, which would have lowered the threshold for a super majority, uh, to a simple majority for low-income housing. We just wanted to keep it the way it was. Uh, and then we voted also no on Prop 4, which would have issued a $10 billion bond. Uh, and the reason for that is just because the, the debt is getting a little out of control now in California. Uh, and then we had a, a presentation from, uh, Martha Guzman. She's a regional administrator of US EPA. And, and of course, we discussed water, and we discussed Kings County, because as we're the first to go on probation, everybody's watching. Uh, Saturday, I, uh, I took my kid to do, um, uh, they call it, uh, indoor, uh, when you jump out of an airplane, what it was. Yes, indoor. Yes, indoor skydiving. Thank you very much. I think I've lost my mind, but my kid had a great time. He flew away, but thankfully he came back down. And yesterday I met with Mayor Payton and, um, City Councilman, uh, Divine on just, uh, city-county issues, uh, water, homelessness, downtown, those kind of things. And then last night I attended with Supervisors the Mid, Mid Kings River GSA. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for myself, I want to thank staff for all the hard work they put into that meeting last night. I don't think people understand how hard it is to bring three separate boards into one room at one time to vote on their issues, and, uh, I know staff work diligently on that. I want to thank, uh, our, uh, uh, County Council for what she did, and I will also want to thank Curia and also, uh, Catherine. Uh, very stressful, uh, getting things done. We tried to get it done, uh, the, the previous Wednesday. Things failed. We had until Wednesday, Thursday night at five, four o'clock. I think we got it done at four oh two. Uh, and then we still got criticized last night for keeping it a secret, but, uh, it's really hard to bring three, three entities, actually four, together, uh, at one time, and we were successful last night. I think in, uh, looking back in the future, this is a big, uh, time in history where we took the care of our, our farmers here in the community, even though some of the farmers didn't feel that way. Um, I think it's good to get it under our control and move forward. So thank you, staff, for doing that, and, uh, not saying I'm looking forward to the future events, but, uh, we're under the, under the spotlight right now, and we gotta lead by example, and we need to get a policy in place to get off probation. So that's our goal today. Uh, at this time, we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, go to Board Correspondents, and we have Matthew Wayette here today filling in for Curia Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the Board received Resolution Number R twenty dash twenty-three twenty-four from the Kingsburg Joint Union High School District ordering an election to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds. Um, your Board also received declarations by authors of arguments or rebuttals from Rafino Usello Junior, and all the documents relating to this matter were received on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Board received correspondence from the California Highway Patrol dated July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which contained the hazmat report pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section two five one eight zero. Board also received the notice of an intent to update the groundwater sustainability plan from the Central Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Board received notice of a public hearing regarding the sixth cycle draft housing element and fair housing analysis from the Planning Commission on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Board received a letter of support of the Kings County District Attorney's Office from the Avonel's, uh, Chief of Police, Cecilio Velasco, dated July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Board received the notice of a proposed amendment to the groundwater sustainability plan pursuant to Water Code Section one zero seven two eight point four from the Southwest Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Board also received an invitation from United Health Centers dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four to participate in their National Health Centers Week event, which will take place on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And lastly, your Board received correspondence from the Hanford Elementary School District dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the general obligation bond elections for November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. And for upcoming events, the Kings County Library kicked off its commute craft, or excuse me, compute craft event at its various branch libraries, where you're invited to some hands-on disassembling and reassembling of the computers. Uh, signups are required as space is limited. So this event will continue today at the Avonel Branch Library at eleven o'clock A M., and then at the Kettleman City Branch Library today at two thirty P M.
Can we take our own computers?
I don't know.
This is them a mine with a hammer.
Uh, tomorrow, the event will be at the Lamore Branch Library at eleven A M. and at the Stratford Branch Library at two thirty P M. And finally, the event will conclude this week on Thursday, August first, at ten A M. at the Hanford Branch Library and one P M. at the Armona Branch Library. Caltrans will host a press conference celebrating the reopening of State Route forty-one from Quail Avenue to State Route one ninety-eight in Kings County, and this event will take place on Thursday, August tw- uh, excuse me, August first at nine A M. at the Kings River Bridge along State Route forty-one, just south of Stratford. And the Department of Child Support Services will host a Kids' Day event to celebrate Child Support Awareness Month on Thursday, August first, from three P, three P M. to seven P M. at three twelve West Seventh Street here in Hanford. Uh, this outreach event is for families in our community to provide back-to-school items for kids, along with information and services available to our community. Um, Behavioral Health will host its Family Members Support Group next Tuesday, August sixth, from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. at the Kings Building located here on campus. And lastly, Behavioral Health will host its Veterans Support Group Tuesday, August thirteenth, from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. um, at the Veterans Memorial Hall here in Hanford. For upcoming agenda items, um, Ag has one item regarding a cooperative agreement for their nursery inspection program. CDA has one item regarding the monthly reporting from the Planning Commission. DA has one item regarding the acceptance of some additional grant funds for insurance fraud programs. JTO has one item regarding an amendment to the agreement with the County of Stanislaw to implement the Regional Equity and Recovery Partnerships Grant for Kings County. And lastly, Public Works has one item for the Avonel Cut Off Roadway Improvements Phase One Project, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I like to make sure I, I forgot Chuck Kenny on CDA for doing the water deal last night. His staff work deals diligently as well, too, so thank you. Uh, we have nothing, uh, for closed session? Okay.
Who's giving the speech? Uh, are you gonna give the speech on, uh, Thursday?
Right, Joe.
Yeah, your hometown.
Yeah, he gets criticized out there, so he might as well take blame for this one.
Yeah, open that highway up, sir.
I think we should do like roadies out in the middle of it, break it in this right.
Yeah. Uh, that can be arranged.
Yeah, okay.
Get a, we'll get you a sheriff's escort, take you through there.
The escort supposed to be in front or behind?
Uh, both in, both.
I, I'm used to more of those escorts when they're behind with the lights on.
Okay, so we'll be there at nine o'clock on, uh, Thursday morning at the Kings River Bridge on Highway forty-one, and this meeting is adjourned until August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, nine A M. Thank you very much.